According to the agenda, we can start immediately.
According to the agenda, we can start immediately.
That's what I said.
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Sedoti. Wait, wait, Roger, before you start, I understand we have a class from Roosevelt here?
No.
No?
Yep.
These are my students from Kent State.
All from Kent State? I thought you-
They're coming at seven.
Oh, all right. Are you the teacher, or the-
Yes, I am the faculty.
You want to tell us why you're here?
Because I want my students to see how local government works. Or how it works, one of the other.
All right. Tonight, the first Wednesday of the month is always our committee meetings.
Correct.
The third meeting of the month is actually the council meeting, who, or where we actually put it into law.
Right.
Okay, as long as you understand that.
And one of us will be back for the third meeting.
We're gonna do a five-minute break. If you people, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, you can leave too. So it's up to you.
I'll listen.
Yes, all right. I gotta go get something too.
He's late because he got in the traffic jam on Frontier Avenue.
In his driveway.
If hell would he look out the street. Heidi, will you take your seat so we could get going here? Thank you.
Where's Tracy?
I don't know, she's a big girl, she can read the agenda, she should be here. All right.
Okay, I'd like to-
We're gonna go.
... Street and sidewalk utilities committee to session, and I see we have a proposed city R O W code update for small cell wireless antennas. Mr. Ruler.
Yes, thank you. And I know it must seem like we talked a lot about small cell wireless, and in some extent we have, but a lot of that's been driven by the continued changes in the state law regarding what rights we have to sort of regulate some of that, so we're taking advantage each time when we've given a little more, we put it on the books. Part of the process of looking at this, Hope and Bridget, I think are now at the point where they seem to think we need to do a little consolidation of our language and sort of put these right-of-way issues, small cell issues, align them up better in our code. So with that, I'll let, she'll tell you more specifically what that means.
And back in July, when Mr. Hannah was here and talked to us about the new small cell chapter that you all approved, we did talk about the changes that needed to be made to 937. The reason that you all did not vote back in July is because there is a state law that requires the city to inform the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio that we are about ready to amend our code, and we have to give them a 45-day notice. We have done that, we didn't hear anything back from them, so I'm just bringing this back and asking you to place it on the agenda for next week so that we can go forward with the changes. And the changes are really to make both 937 and the small cell ordinance, they don't conflict in any way, that they sing to each other if-
You're talking about the 17th, not next week.
Correct, the 17th, thank you. So, unless there's any questions at all.
I was gonna say, any questions from council? Yes, Mike?
Can they object to it after we turn it into, because we didn't really tell them what we're changing here, mostly?
No, and you know what, you're not required to tell them. What happens is if they, if they, if they think they want to see it, what they would do is they'd contact us and they would say, "We want to see it." All we're required to do is give them that notice, and that's what we did, and we did not hear from anyone.
Other members of council have any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to speak to this proposal? If not, back to the city council.
To authorize?
Second.
With emergency?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay, discussion.
Oh, what happened in the discussion?
Motion.
All right, now we're fine.
It already passed.
Yeah, it already passed. I didn't think anyone wanted to discuss it.
Gals got out and you just closed the gate. All right, Magador Road paving project.
Yeah, I think this is another positive one. Jim got word that the county's gonna be doing some paving on their portion of Magador Road, and the opportunity sort of presents itself, all the paving equipment's out there, could they extend a little bit into the incorporated limits of the city? And Jim was able to kind of say, "Let me see what money I got in the capital budget," and the basic answer was, "You bet, let's do it." So, he's here seeking your authorization to allow that to occur, and he'll tell you which part of 260, oh, sorry, which part of Magador Road that is, but I think it's south of 261, right?
Yes. It's Magador Road, south of 261 to Howe Avenue, and if you're not quite familiar, the city limit sort of jogs in and out along that stretch, so 28 percent of their limits is actually within the city. They got a grant to pay half of it, so they're asking us to pay our share of the part that they owe, so we get the benefit of the grant funding as well, too, so.
Okay, Heidi?
Yeah, I'm curious as to why maybe we didn't request north of 261, because that road's pretty rough.
We did. We submit, we came to council April and asked to submit for a grant to pave Magador Road from 261 to Cherry, and we were successful in receiving that. However, we have not been able to find funding yet for Magador Road from Cherry to Summit, so we'll continue to look for that here in the near future.
Thank you.
Mr. Kuak.
So we're talking from 261 to somewhere up to the middle of the hill?
For our, for our project?
Yeah.
To Cherry Street. It's-
No, no, the one that we're talking about-
The county? That's to Howe Avenue, to the south.
Oh, it's going all the way to Howe?
Correct.
So, our portion and the county's portion combined to Howe Road?
Correct.
Okay. But our portion is halfway up the hill?
Pretty much, yeah. And mostly on the east side and some on the west.
Let's kind of get used to that one chuck, though.
Getting airborne.
Other questions from council? Seeing no questions from council, anyone from the audience just to speak to this issue? Not seeing anyone?
To authorize with emergency?
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
Sounds good.
Yes?
Oh, I just think this is a great example of partnering to pool our money to get objectives done by the city and the county together, so I think it's great.
Other discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. There you go.
Health and public safety. Mr. Hamer.
Health and public safety, we have one thing on the agenda, and that is to authorize the vagrancy ordinance revisions.
Yeah, this, so if you think for a minute, we actually don't have a lot of this that I've seen in Kent, I tend to see a little more in Akron as you get in towards the medical area and the campus. This is more specifically dealing with sort of this beggars soliciting at intersections, and it turns out we have some old language in our, in our current existing ordinance, and Hope is asking to update that language to sort of comply with kind of where the courts are at, when they've interpreted those old languages that we have in it now. So we do need to revise it, and in essence, I mean, she can give you the details, but in essence, it's stepping back our restrictions, so.
And this, this was brought to my attention because the mayor forwarded a letter that he received from the ACLU that asked us to please repeal our vagrancy statute, because not only is it unconstitutional, and it is, because homeless people and vagrants have a right to ask for money to get help, and the United States Supreme Court has indicated that they have a right to ask for help, and that our response should not be to arrest them, but our response should be something better, especially in a community that is, like is in Kent. Some of the sections that we will be repealing, but I feel that are still constitutional and okay, are actually covered in other sections of the, for instance, if it says- Has an, if someone has an instrument or thing to burglarize a house, well, that's a criminal tool, so that's somewhere else. I also talked to Chief Lee, and she says we do not use this section at all. It's my opinion that it's very old, it's unconstitutional, the words even seem like 1930-ish if you look at it. So I would ask council to allow us to place this on the agenda in two weeks so that we can repeal the section and hold.
Questions from council? John?
Yeah. Back in, I don't know, 1970, '71, I worked with Attorney Quinn in the state of Florida, which has 67 vagrancy laws which are unconstitutional, and they've progressed throughout the years. Now, my question is this, I do have a question. The public begging by vagrants or homeless people, which was in some way ruled allowable, in some municipalities, they had zones set out to where you were allowed to do your public begging, and zones that you weren't. Is that provided in what we're proposing here?
It is not, and I believe that Akron did that, tried to say, "You can go here, you can go there," and I believe that a court has, someone's challenged that in court to indicate that you had to get, you have to get a permit in Akron, which is not constitutional. You get a time of day, like you're allowed to go down there from 1:00 to 2:00 today, and then when the next person comes up, that is not constitutional. People, people who need help have a right to ask for help. Now, if they're getting out into traffic and causing a problem, causing, you know, they're an accident or a nuisance, in some other way that is really not, has nothing to do with their begging, yes, we can go out and control that, but no, we can't say you're only allowed to beg, because most towns, honestly, they pick places that aren't probably good for begging, you know, we'd place it on the bridge.
Well, we've got issues with obstructing passersby's and, you know, public walkways, and charge a dollar to walk across the sidewalk in front of them, and all types of issues, and that's what brought that issue out, to have no begging zones.
Well, in that case, if someone, if the, if the person that needs help is getting aggressive about it, that's another issue. You're not gonna keep our sidewalks from, and intersections from being used. Again, that has nothing to do with the begging itself, that's just getting aggressive and getting in people's way.
Mike?
I've read in the paper and seen on the news that there's a lot of communities going through this right now. I think Akron's one of the biggest, because it's always on the news for this, so.
I think so, yes.
Further questions? Roger?
Yeah, so, help me out here, is this just on the public thoroughfares, or does this open the door for door-to-door solicitation?
No, the door-to-door solicitation is lawful, there is, as, as long as, the only prohibitions we can put on must be, they must be, be neutral in the way we treat people. We can't treat businesses or political speech better than we treat a beggar coming up to the house. But, we can say to everyone, you know, dusk is, you're not gonna go to any of the residential neighborhoods until dusk. That is content neutral, and that would probably fly, but when we start picking out different groups to, to pick on, I will say, then that's, that's when it gets scary, it's sticky and unconstitutional.
Do you, do you think that there is something we could do to help individuals in terms of how to address that at their homes? I mean, I really, I've had, you know, an experience where someone complained to me that there was someone in Argyle, over there on the west side, that was knocking on the door and was basically begging for money, and how to handle that. Now, I handled it the way I would handle anything, someone who needed help, "How can we help you?" You know, that, that. So, it, what my concern is, is that there are people in the community who really don't know how, good people, who really are good-hearted people, they're just not sure how to handle that, because we don't usually get it here.
Typically, a no solicitation, no solicitation sign is the best way to deal with it, because...
Which we offer, our police department offers those for free, it references the code right on it.
Right.
And then if they get someone that they don't recognize at their door knocking, then they could call the police, or, you know, if they're afraid to open the door, I would hope that they wouldn't be afraid, but if they are, you know, little old woman or something that doesn't-
Right, right.
Yes, call the police.
I just want to make sure that we all understand-
We do, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Brings up a crossed wire in my head. We require, the Constitution says that they're allowed to go begging door-to-door, correct? Okay, or, at least you said that. But in the city of Kent, if you're a solicitor, you have to have a permit. Does that mean we require a beggar has to have a permit? Because if we don't, then we are conflicting our own law.
I believe in the, I'm not sure if it's in our vendor or solicitor section of our codified ordinances, I believe there is an exemption section. Like, for instance, I think possibly, and I apologize if I misspeak, but I think maybe possibly charitable, nonprofit charitable organizations are exempted and don't need to get a permit, possibly all religious organizations, but yes, there are exemptions in our code that don't require a permit.
But then why are, why does anybody else have to get a permit if we're, why isn't everybody exempt if you allow one person to be exempt?
Well-
It's like a two-faced law.
Well, and it is, and those have been upheld. Most of the time, especially for businesses, the, the city wants to know who is coming and going, because if you're selling something in the city, I'm sure our tax department would like to know about it. As opposed to a homeless person that gets 25 cents, maybe they should be reporting it as income, but I don't, I'm not sure that Dave would care about that 25 cents. As, well, he would, as opposed to someone that wants to fix your roof because they think you have hail damage, and we haven't had hail in five years.
Well, I wonder if this person that's a beggar, I mean, we're not running background checks on him when he comes to the door, I wonder if he's a predator? How about the safety of our residents?
You know, he may be, he may be. There are some things, the United States Constitution cares, or the United States Supreme Court cares more about the First Amendment of the Constitution and a person's First Amendment right to ask for help than they, than they do those other issues, and sometimes it doesn't seem fair, but, but constitutions, or the United States Supreme Court is correct. The, the code is also allowed to have a difference between, business speech is considered a little bit different than political speech. Political speech and First Amendment-type speech are the most, the Supreme Court will hold those up the highest as far as protecting those. Then, when you go to business speech, because it's for a profit, typically the courts will not, will not give them as much leeway as what they will for religious, political, other free speech.
But John, I would say, I think Roger brought it out, the best solution is, any homeowner can ask for a no solicitation, no solicitation, and that period, then if there's a problem, the police can immediately be called.
I won't give my follow-up comment.
Further questions? Anybody from the audience wish to talk on this subject? Okay, come up to the microphone, come up to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Well, it's called more illegible things, so I'll see if I can get through them. Carl Meyer, 1734 Walnut Road. I just wanted to mention some of the language that we've been using. For instance, vagrants, that noun, to me seems very marginalizing a certain population, or we could go with beggars, it sounds very 1930-ish, very, very much not retro, but criminalizing the homeless. I know that that is, it is difficult, but if we criminalize people that come to the door, we're gonna have half of Kent Roosevelt in a slammer in Portage County. They do the fundraisers, and also some religious organizations that evangelize, I, you know, I, my son used to work for Citizens Action, and they would go in and try to solicit donations for anti-fracking, for instance. That was a difficult job, I'm glad he doesn't do that anymore. But I just wanted to mention, since the city council in Fort Lauderdale, you know, they, it's driven by money, it's driven by the dollar, and the mayor, my stepdaughter, that Mr. Sedoti knows, Trishell, she said, "Gee, I met the mayor, he's such a great guy," and I said, "I've read that he's a son of a gun," because, she goes, "How can you say that? He's a great guy." I said, "Well, he's very affable, I'm sure, and seems professional, but he made homelessness a crime in that city," and people that were trying, there was a pastor from, I'm not sure the denomination, the pastor went ahead and was feeding the homeless somewhere in the, I don't know, but the very trendy area of Fort Lauderdale downtown with all the galleries. This upsets the mayor and council very much, and they've made a lot of arrests. But, anyway, then they arrested the preacher, the pastor, I thought that was a sad thing, but I think it's nice that you're all having, I believe the scientific term these days is having a conversation, so I really appreciate that you're having a conversation about it, and that's, I think, the best problem-solving there is. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Carl. Name and address, please.
Uh, Tina Bargavas, 630 Resticano Drive. I just, I teach about some issues of homelessness and food security, I work on Kent's campus. We have students who are homeless, who are food insecure, actually a lot more than people realize. I just wanted to encourage you, as a city council, to be thinking about what the approach is for those people, to help them connect to resources, and a lot of cities, not cities the size of Kent, but bigger cities, they actually have vans that go out to meet with people who are soliciting for funds, to provide them with hourly work, helping clean up parks, helping do things like that where they can give them some wage for the day. So we'll pay you $5 an hour, whatever, sorry, minimum wage is what, 830? So we'll pay you this much an hour to help us with these tasks for the day, so that you have that. And in Kent, we have the possibility of working with family and community services to see, could they go out there, take a bottle of water to someone who's out soliciting for funds, let them know about Miller Community House, let them know about the services that we have, where they might be able to find a source for a job or housing. So, we don't, we still have a lot of problems in this country, and certainly in Ohio with affordable housing, where the problem, homeless problem is not gonna be going away. We have a lot of people who, who do not have a permanent address, so just encourage you to move in that direction.
Thank you. Further from the audience? Back to council, any question? Yes?
I would like to move to repeal the vagrancy ordinance.
Second.
With emergency?
Discussion? Heidi?
Well, I, it does seem like 1930-ish, and it does limit people's rights to ask for help, so I, I believe that we need to also make sure that our legislation is in keeping with the Constitution of the United States, and we have all sworn to uphold the Constitution of the United States. So, it seems like the logical thing to do.
Anymore?
I would just have to say that I see no value in criminalizing requesting help. I agree with this, this is with the ACLU, with the, with keeping line with the Constitution, this is, this is apparent to me that harassment and criminalization of people that are in need is the wrong way to go about it, and that's not the direction I'd like to see this city take.
John?
Well, unlike Florida, I don't think we have 67 vagrancy laws that make it impossible to be in the city without being a vagrant. I happen to have a homeless person that's an independent contractor that works for me on an almost daily basis, and can't afford housing because of some illnesses he had in the past, so, yeah, I think as long as we don't get in a situation where there's communicable problems caused, we need to get those things off the books.
Okay, Roger?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I think we need to continue to educate our public as to how they can extend help to homeless and to people who are truly in great need, and it, it's as simple as that brochure that we all receive, and I think that is available that shows all of the various organizations in this town that will, will help, and I just think that's real important, and somehow we gotta figure out how to educate to do that.
Okay. Do I, do I have a motion?
Yeah.
You made a motion, do we have a-
In the second?
And who was the second?
We're in discussion.
Okay. Okay, no, where were you? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Finance committee, Mr. Delio. I think this is probably-
Wait a minute, Mike. Roger, how many agendas are still on that table back there? I wanna speak to the class that came in from Roosevelt. You're coming in the middle of a meeting, and I apologize for that, we started early. Are there any more agendas back there? Somebody wanna go back to that table and get the orange piece of paper so you kind of figure out where we're at?
Just orange ones, white ones.
Now we have people living on the mangroves next to my condo on the ocean that get three free meals a day, take taxes, get a federal work.
We're going into the finance committee, and so you kind of understand what we're doing here. Tonight are our committee discussions, and what we do here tonight will be reflected in two weeks at our regular council meeting, and whatever we do will be made legal, so kind of understand where we're at. All right.
Mike?
Now, the finance committee's the most important one.
Money isn't so much, I heard that.
We're gonna consider the rescinding fees for 535 Bowman.
Yeah, it's not often that we come to you asking to take it off the table, but as you know, we submit a list of properties that are in arrears early in the fall that we send over to the county, certify to the county, and they put it on the property tax, as a property tax lien, and it turned out one of those was able to demonstrate that they shouldn't have had that, that lien placed upon them, and it's more of a timing issue when they acquired the house, and as a result of that, we just need to clean that up, and they're right, and Hope can give you a little more of the details.
The, the home at 535 Bowman in 2017 was about ready to experience a foreclosure and sheriff sale. And in June of 2017, after the court had gotten all the information they needed, they scheduled a sheriff's sale. And a Mr. Cosma Valor bought the home, or he had the highest bid. And in a sheriff's sale, it's not like, you know, the hammer goes down and it's sold, it, the sheriff has to get back to the court, the court has to look at the proceedings and how much was brought in to make sure that enough was brought in to at least partially satisfy the lien that caused the sale. And that took, the court actually, actually certified the sale on August 16th, 2017. Now, between those times, the city of Kent brought an ordinance to council asking you to certify certain delinquent fees to several residents, and this fee happened to be delinquencies because of a mowing issue, which we know go along with foreclosures. When Mr. Valor received his taxes this year, he realized, he looked at that and wondered what was going on, and he spent, he has spent the better part of this year trying to explain to us that we were wrong. After I took a look at the docket and everything that went on, I realized that he was correct. I called the auditor's office and asked them how they would like us to proceed to get that money taken off of his tax bill, and they indicated that- taken off of his tax bill. And they indicated that since you approved it, we had to come back to you and ask you to basically decertify that fee off of this property. And that's what I am asking you to place on the agenda in two weeks as an ordinance, decertifying this amount.
Questions? Robin?
Yeah. Mr. Valor called me, asking me to intercede. I did talk to the community development department. And they indicated to me that he had no basis for his claim.
And, Robin, I, and I know why, because I had a conversation with Bridget. When Bridget saw that sheriff's sale of, or of, I'm sorry, in August 2017, she thought we got there quick enough. You actually have to go back to the June date, and that's where Mr. Valor bid on the property two months before we placed the certification on there. And after I talked to her, she realized what the problem was. And after we went through the timeline, she agrees with me now.
John?
Well, doesn't, was that not an error on the sheriff's department, then?
No, no, because this is what happens in a foreclosure sale. The bank, I'll be short. The bank decides that they need to go into foreclosure. So what they do is they will ask for a title search, is what they call it. And they go out and they look for every lien, every mortgage, any penny that someone might have certified against that property. And when they do that, that's when the lawsuit is filed. And that would have been back in probably 2016. Once the proceedings are getting to, enrolling to the point where the judge is going to say, I want, I want a sheriff's sale, she or he will require the mortgage company to do what's called a final judicial report. And at that point, it's to make sure that nothing has cropped up between the filing of the lawsuit and now we're going to order a sheriff's sale. That was done. I saw that they had done that. But again, that was before our certification.
So the certification came. And so there's no timely, there's no timely limit that the city has to abide by. I know, like on mechanic's league, you got a certain amount of time after the act.
No, we do. We do it once a year. So every, every August or September, we do that certification.
Is there, is the city required to file those liens at a certain time after the act?
No.
And the one thing, too, is what we use when we're verifying sale or purchase of a property is the auditor's posting of when that sale was completed. And the posting was done in August. It had an August date, once all the paperwork was done. But what Hope was able to find in the court records was that it was in effect in June at the night of the sheriff's sale. So that was the difference right there, was we've always used the auditor's website for that final determiner of when an acquisition or a sale occurred. But she was able to find it further back in the court record.
And I will also tell you, I'm sorry. I will also tell you that I looked at how much the home sold for, what the liens were, and the fact that our liens were, they're unprotected, they're unsecured. We were way down on the list. It was $1,500 and I think 70, $1,570. We wouldn't have gotten paid out of that foreclosure. And what we have, and we still have today, is a judgment against the previous property owners, but the likelihood of getting any money is very slim, very slim.
Further questions?
So I'm curious, are we amending our, the legislation we passed in June?
No. What we are doing is, I refer to the old legislation as a history for you and for the auditor saying that we sent a bunch of properties up there. We are now decertifying just this one property. So it's a brand-new ordinance, not an amendment.
So it's another, it's a new piece of legislation to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further? Is there anyone in the audience? Back to council?
Move to approve its emergency?
Second.
Discussion, anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Community development, Mr. Cor. Well, we have the proposed urban chicken regulatory options.
Yes. And she's coming. She's.
The bucket's empty.
There are a few problems a bucket of fried chicken can't solve.
Eggs, eggs. I should have brought eggs.
It may not have been in her original job description, but she's become sort of the chief hen here for the city. And as you all know, it's no easy job because there's a lot of nuances to this, and opinions range even among council. And so I know Bridget and I had a couple of conversations where she's kind of scratching her head and saying, I'm not sure what I'm supposed to take back because they're kind of all over the map. You know, and we try to bring you stuff that's sort of representative of the middle. This middle was a little harder. So I think, to some extent, her solution, and I thought it was a good one, was to give you a couple of options. I mean, it's sort of like a menu. And not to use the Kentucky Fried Chicken, but you know, you got some options, and you can kind of pick and choose among some of those. We'll give you our advice. But she tried to take a first stab at that, but then really it comes up to your feedback and how you want to carve this out. I know, I got to stop. Sorry.
They didn't give a thought.
I did not realize that my son, half his class was going to be here tonight. So this is kind of entertaining. But for those of you that are doing this, the class time, and I actually do have extras on the draft legislation that we will be talking about right now. Hope and I worked together on taking the recommendations and conversations from the last council meeting. We went through the minutes. And using that and models from other communities, we put together the draft legislation that was submitted to you as part of the communication. There is a couple items that aren't reflected on there that I want to put out there ahead of time. I know that Garrett had asked about parcel size as using that as a determinant versus the setbacks. So we do not have parcel size available on our GIS layering, but I was able to work with some of the data sets on the auditor's website and get it down to where I was able to do that determination. And if we were to use parcel size, I can tell you that 73% of the owner-occupied residential parcels fall below a half acre. And only 21% fall between a half acre and one acre, and 6% over one acre. So if we were to use that discussion of a half acre, it would eliminate a significant portion of the households that might be entertaining having backyard chickens. So based on that determinant, we did, in our draft legislation, base it on a setback. The setback requirements are modeled off the R3 zoning district requirements, which is 30 feet off the primary structure from the rear yard and 10 on either side. That is a starting point. That number could go down. I would like to say, though, that in our Chapter 1161 that deals with accessory structures of the zoning code, we have for accessory structures, 10 on either side and 10 off the back. So I would recommend that we definitely, in your discussions, do not go below those levels, because it would be contradictory to the other accessory structures that we have in our code. One other item, I was able to, with the help of Kent State Geography Department, they actually have a geographer now that will do community projects. She was unable to look at every single parcel in the city. She will be working on that as a larger project for me. But what I asked her to do was take an area and look at the parcels in that, and apply those setbacks of 10 feet on either side, as well as the 30 off the rear. And using that in an R2 out of 967 residential units, 872 would have met that setback requirement, which is 90%. So in other words, the R3 requirement of the 10 on the side and 30 in the back, if it was applied to the R3, which is a higher density, so you'd be dealing with smaller, it still would mean that a significant portion, I would imagine at least 60, 70% of the households would be able to, if legislation was approved for backyard chickens, meet a setback requirement as represented in this draft. Okay, now that that's out, we can go through the actual draft legislation. Yes?
Do you have questions now, or you want to complain?
I'm not sure that I was going to go through it, but if we want to have questions, I'm.
Okay, I think Heidi had her hand up first.
I have a question on the setback one. So it's specific to that one. So what is the point of the setbacks? Let me ask you. Is it the point of the setbacks to protect the neighbor's yard, or is it to protect the neighbor's residence? So the point is that perhaps, I'm really, I'm concerned about the high-density houses. And I do know that a number of them would like to have chickens, or already do. So if I look at 30 feet from the backyard versus 30 feet from the neighboring residence, that would protect the residence, but it also, but it also might eliminate many people from being able to have chickens in the best area of their yard for chickens. Now, the 10-foot, I have a neighbor that has their house five feet from the property line on my side yard. Therefore, it would not be a good, that would not be a good idea to have a chicken coop 10 feet. That would only give that neighbor 15 feet away from the chicken, from where the chickens were mainly kept. So I'm just wondering whether we could amend that, what you thought about amending that to be 30 feet from the neighboring residence?
The issue with that is when you are trying to enforce, if we get a call, as I mentioned, we are still advocating for the passive enforcement, complaint-driven. If, for example, the community development department gets a complaint of a chicken coop that is not, is too close to a parcel line, we do not have the ability to trespass on that neighbor's yard and measure from the corner of their residence to that parcel line. So setbacks are always taken off the primary structure and the parcel line. So it is done not just because of the primary structure itself, but because the entire property, that entire parcel belongs to the adjacent property owner, whether it be in the rear or the side. By placing it 10 feet off the parcel line, it is basically centered in and around the primary structure. So it's 10 feet off the parcel sideline, but they, the chicken coop is not the same width as the house. So in other words, they would center it in their yard, but the coop itself, size-wise, is going to be significantly smaller than the house. So meeting that 10-foot setback on either side should not be an issue, because you're looking at the five foot from the parcel lines to primary structure. You need to remember, it's 10 foot from the parcel line to the edge of the coop.
Yeah. Okay, follow-up? Okay, so I have two, two issues around this. First of all, some people that are, permaculture is becoming a very, very popular. And permaculture would involve the use of a chicken tractor, which would be a movable coop. It could be in addition to the coop, or it could be the coop, depending on the size. So what people that want to do the permaculture, they would tractor the chickens around. They would always be in a fenced-in area. But, you know, the idea is that, and this also blends into another one of your stipulations, but the idea is that the chickens fertilize the land. And it would also work for grass, quite frankly. And they also eat the pests, the bugs. And so that's a very important purpose to people that want to have chickens. So common sense means that, could there, you know, could people have their coop in one area and move the chickens around?
We're not recommending that. You have to, I did look at that, because one of the residents that spoke at the meeting actually brought that up.
Yes.
It is a usable model, but I've talked to those that have chickens, and they advocate for that more in an area that is more rural in a setting. You're dealing with high-density residential areas. And while the, what you are presenting is for those that are in favor of having chickens, the adjacent property may not. And you do need to remember, too, that our zoning code and much of our regulatory requirements stipulate many things not in a front yard, as well as a side yard. You're not allowed to park in the side yard, you're not allowed to park in the front yard, you're not allowed to have a fence in certain areas of a certain height. This would fall under that same rule. While conceptually, I recognize the merits and benefits of that. That has to be balanced with the reality that we are in an older community with high-density residential areas. So the compromise has to be set that not everyone may be able to get all aspects of backyard chickens that they want. We need to find what's reasonable and doesn't encroach on those that don't want the chickens.
Okay, one more on this one. So would there be a follow-up? Like, could there be an exception, a hearing for exceptions, say like the BZA?
We would not take this to the BZA because this is not being put in the city zoning code. This is actually going to be under Section 505 of the Kent codified ordinances, and will be handled as basically under the general offenses code. We have not included an amendment process, but we anticipate it would be something where the law director, city manager, in consultation with the community development director, would look at this. We actually have those mechanisms built in for other aspects of it. Things that deal with zoning code, though, definitely do, are required through our charter to go through the BZA. This would be a different one. For example, we have people that appeal to POD. The POD legislation that was recently enacted, we had somebody that received a citation. And that appeals process involved a hearing in which the evidence was presented by the code enforcement officer to the community development director. And based on that information, I made a decision that was then reviewed by the law department. So it would be probably something similar to that. But we haven't structured that yet until we actually get the specific legislation pieces put together. Hope, you want to chime in on that?
Yeah. I'm taking a break.
I'm going to make it.
So there should be, like, some kind of a process where people can, can say, I have a special situation here?
Yes. And we, actually, we have that with issues with, for example, when there is a new construction, you are required to put sidewalk in. Our code allows, not, not the zoning code, but another section of our code allows for them to submit for a variance request that's recommended by the community development department and approved by the city manager. And in certain instances, for example, we just had one on Cuyahoga, where the sidewalk, the request was to not install that because there is no sidewalks on that street, and it would have looked out of place. It would have been a sidewalk only in front of the new property. We made that recommendation. It was a reasonable one, and the city manager approved that variance. So we would build some type of case-by-case review that would allow us to look at those situations.
Thank you.
Jerry?
Correct me if I'm wrong. Prior days, when we discussed this first, it was a two-acre parcel.
It currently is a two-acre parcel in the code.
All right, I understand. I can see a movable chicken pen on two acres.
Correct.
I'm with Heidi on this, on this side yard setback. 10 feet, that's not even, you know, I can't, I can't, I live in an older neighborhood. And 10-foot, you're putting, darn near putting that in the neighbor's yard. I just, 10-foot is not an agreeable amount on this side yard stuff.
The setbacks can be altered. As we use, basically, the setback that we use in an R3 as this, basically as a starting point.
All right, that's just, I, I got a real big concern with that.
Okay, a question. Garrett, did you have your hand up?
I'll wait till later.
Questions, please. Roger?
Bridget, I want to make sure I get this clarified in my mind. So.
Do it in a question form.
I am going to do it in a question form. So a 30, a 30-foot setback means that if I have a 40-foot deep from the back of my house to the property line, that that chicken coop's got to be against my house.
Near, to your house.
Okay. So, so the compromise is, if you want to have chickens, you, if I understand this correctly, it's what we're looking at in terms of trying to be fair for everyone. If you want to have chickens, then as long as that coop is 30 feet off of that back property line, then that, that would meet the code.
Correct.
Okay. And if someone says, correct me if I'm wrong, if they say, no, we want it further away from our house, well, would that be the same issue of the people in the neighborhood who live behind them that don't want it any closer to their house?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's why the setbacks are established in that form.
All right. So, so the reality is, is that, correct me if I'm wrong, have, is this the type of trying to balance everything we've talked about in terms of trying to make that fit in the legislation?
Yes. I recognize that some may not, because of the configuration of their lot, may not want it to be closer to their home. But by that same token, an adjacent property or a rear yard may. yard may have uses in their yards that they don't want that coop close to their property. So this is that way of ensuring that the property, adjacent property owners can enjoy their property, and the person that wants the chickens can have them, but there has to be a balance between those two competing interests.
Thank you.
Bridget, was, when you were putting this together, was your, did you envision it, or was your intention to encourage people to put the coop essentially behind the garage? Like, kind of, like, closer to their home, in a space, you know, behind the garage? So it wouldn't actually be next to another home if it can't be?
Correct.
In front of or on the side yard? So basically, the way the setbacks are, was that your design?
The design of the setbacks, not just for the recommendation in terms of this backyard chicken legislation, but in terms of setback use throughout the zoning code, is to ensure that those that want to make adjustments to their property can, but they do it in a way that is balanced against those that, adjacent properties that may not want that. That's why we don't let you put a garage right up to a parcel line, right, Mike? It is why we do not allow you to just install a shed right on a, because, well, it's a beautiful shed. Somebody may not want that shed right up next to a parcel line, because it blocks their view of something else that was there, or they use that space. So it's a balancing, when you're dealing with property issues, of those that want certain conditions and those that do not. And so setbacks are used to ensure that that balance survives. It does mean that some parcels may not meet these requirements, but that is the case also for all other aspects of many of our properties. There are some properties that just can't even have a pool, because they can't enclose it in the fence area and things like that. It's the nature of, you know, the ownership of the parcel that you purchased.
Tracy?
So if a person wants you, they can just back it right up to their house if they want to?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then, another question or suggestion, could they, could you, like you were saying that the tractors are more, work better in rural areas? Could we put a thing in the code that says, "If you have a property that's such and such a size, then you may use a tractor"?
Well, right now, we do have in the legislation that you can have them, basically, on a two-acre, so we could establish it. I know that I did just run those acre numbers, and based on that, you could even bring that down to one and a half acres, because that would not be that many households, and you still would be able to allow for somebody that has more of a rural setting. But I do strongly recommend that we do not do that in the higher-density residential areas. That is basically going to comprise the majority of the households that are going to want the backyard chickens. I would prefer the fixed coop and the fixed run. One of the other messages that I heard from those that actually house the chickens is that they need to be predatory safe. That, you know, there's someone that actually lives in the township that told me they had 30, they're down to 12. So even with the coop and everything, so moving, having a moving, you know, tractor, having the opportunity where maybe somebody was supposed to move it in the coop and they didn't, really increases the risk of that. And that also creates issues that I'd rather not, we get a lot of calls on, you know, animals that are hit in the road. We don't want to also have to be dealing with that, because it is a higher-density areas that we're dealing with. So some of these parameters are set to ensure quality of life matters, as well as just property rights.
Garrett?
Bridget, is the issue of getting authorization to go on somebody's property negated by the fact you can use a laser rangefinder to determine the distance?
We actually, we have to find the pins, and then we measure off the pins. So when we-
Pins for the structure?
For the parcel. Parcel line. We measure off parcel lines. So we determine the parcel.
But you can kind of get a pretty good idea if somebody's-
Yes, if somebody's encroached off that space, yes, we can. But we do usually, and there are times, actually, where we've had encroachments of fences, for example. Someone will have pulled a fence permit and have the fence company install it, and it encroaches on an adjacent property. We advise them, they need to get a surveyor to look at that. So if it became a real contentious issue between two neighboring properties, we would advise them strongly to pay for the survey and get it done. The city, on private property, we do not make those determinations. We do it visually, we do it off, basically, we do it off the parcel maps.
But if, so if I'm the neighbor, if I have the chicken coop on mine, and my neighbor thinks that it's too close, the neighbor calls the city, the city can come onto their property, because they authorize it, you can shoot it with a rangefinder and get an idea of where it is.
If we owned a rangefinder.
We'll get you one.
I'll put it in the budget, Mr. Coffee.
Take it out of your golf bag.
But typically, I can tell you legally, we tend to not, we basically say, "This is an approximate," based on the parcel maps that we pull from our own databases, as well as the auditor's website. Because without an actual survey done by a surveyor, we cannot legally say that you are encroaching by this much. Even with the BZA, for example, for a variance request through the Board of Zoning Appeals, we base it on parcel maps, and then, of course, the, whoever draws the garage, the contractor, will do that measurement based off the survey and let us know how much they need in terms of that variance request. So that is measured out. There are times that we will assist in advising, but in a matter like that, we would tell them that they need to get a professional survey.
But the issue comes down to your comment of, "We can't go out there and measure it, because we can't get on the neighboring property," is probably overstated based on technology today, that you can at least get somebody in the right position, could you not, to say, "We've got an estimate of what the distance is, now it's time you go get a..."
We can do an estimate, but I have to tell you, there's actually unusual configurations on many of the parcels in the city, and you would be surprised with tree growth and bushes, how you cannot get a visual. We actually have a situation where we actually had a homeowner that we had a contact, because they were about to build a garage in a setback area. We were given, granted permission from an adjacent property owner to view it, because you could not see it from the street. You couldn't, so.
Any questions from council? Heidi?
Yeah, number, what is it? Six, seven, eight, under J.
Number eight.
About chicken waste. And I understand that this is a good idea for lots of reasons, for predators. So this is the chicken waste one. For predators, I think that's a really good idea. However, there are some people that know how to compost very well, and could reasonably compost that waste without it becoming a predator issue.
I actually had that brought up to me this morning by Gwen, and I would say that composting, we are not adverse to including that, but we would say that it would have to be buried. You cannot do just the basic compost pile like you do with orange peels. I also know that Jeff is here to speak to some of the health concerns that may be associated with the passage of this legislation, but if that language is included, we would specify that it needs to be buried compost.
Buried compost, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else from council? Anybody from the, oh, Jeff's got something.
I was just going to, are we going to have Bridget go through, like, the description of it? Are we just going to go questions?
Other questions?
Jeff, I mean, and one other point I know that Gwen brought up, which I verified, it does list pigeons under the types of other foul that would not be included. I did confirm that we do not have pigeons listed in Section 505 as a foul, so we would likely strike that, so that the listed, the ones added to this new Section 505-21, the listed foul actually matches what you already have as our definition of foul. One of the things we've learned over the years with our zoning code is definition matching is important for enforcement. So we would just make sure that we verified that. She brought that question up to me as well.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to bring up some suggestions for you all to think about, because I read this today, and basically, I have a small list here for you. Waste disposal, okay? It says, "Waste shall be stored in a reasonably airtight, predator-proofed container." I get that. How often should it be disposed, like, truly disposed? And where are we disposing it, is another question. When does, I guess, too much waste, you know, what's a reasonable amount of waste, I guess, that we really need? Because, you know, that's kind of wishy-washy in the code, I guess. I think we should put some parameters about what is a reasonable amount of waste someone can have on property? How are they going to dispose of it? And where? Those are simple ones.
Sounds.
Yeah. Cleaning frequency of the coop. When does it, I guess, become a nuisance? Everybody has a different definition of that. And who enforces the nuisance? And, you know, does it fall under a specific code? I know it's our general offenses code type of stuff.
Don't worry.
All right. We've got plenty going on. Another issue is, we do have small egg processors here in Kent that basically sell their eggs to farmers' markets, other places. Would this put them out of business? Or how would that be addressed, I guess? Because Ohio allows egg sales from a farm, you know, what they consider farm, or small egg processor, which is someone who has under 500 chickens. They allow that, you know, I don't, something we may want to address before we say, you know, whose code supersedes what code and what we give, you know? That can get always dicey.
Yeah.
You know, and would somebody, you know, I know they can't sell their eggs, right? But does this permit, I mean, I just worry about the exchange of chicken eggs, especially big part of our concern, obviously, chicken is linked to salmonella. Chicken, backyard chicken, chicken coops have caused over 5,000 cases of salmonella since 2000. You know, my job is obviously to investigate that and trace back where it could be coming from to prohibit, you know, prevent future illnesses being spread. So those are just, you know, where my mind goes, too, on these type of things. Because, trust me, we see a little bit of everything at farmers' markets and everything else that Kent offers. Does this prohibit free-range chickens? I know in the chicken world, that's a whole nother subject. Okay, because, yeah, you know, I would be very concerned about, obviously, well, potential contamination of other coops, for example, is a big one. You know, chickens, if they do carry disease, just so everybody knows, they can transmit those diseases to domesticated animals, like your cat and dog, and obviously, then they're the carrier to us. One of the things I did have a real big issue, concern with, excuse me, is schools. It says, "No more than six backyard chickens are permitted per dwelling unit or school." I am totally in support of middle and high school, grade school. If it's going to be outside, we can't get kids to wash their hands before they eat lunch. You know, that's a potential transmission source there, especially if they're going to go outside. How are they going to wash their hands? You know, how we touch our face, what, five times a minute supposedly? So those are just some concerns that I had. I think I have one more. Yeah, I mean, we all know salmonella, campy, bacteria, E. coli, the list is long as far as chickens. And then, another question that I thought of when listening here to Bridget was the coop run. We have the chicken coop setback. Are there any setbacks for the run?
I guess this would include the whole coop and run.
Okay.
And it'd be included one unit.
Okay. All right, good, just, you know, tighten that up.
So in other words, the run can't extend?
I would assume not past 10 feet. I do have some concerns about the 10 feet, just from a nuisance standpoint, especially if we're not going to address the, the waste issue. I mean, these guys do produce a lot of feces, a lot of waste. Rainy seasons, especially people not cleaning that stuff out frequency, we all know water's going to find its way to the lowest part. So, you know, those could be other neighborly issues we get involved with later down the road type of thing. So, yeah, those are just some of my thoughts, questions, you know, concerns, just so we're thinking about it.
Heidi?
Yeah, I do have a question about diseased chickens. So if you find a case of salmonella and there's a chicken, there's, you can identify that a home has a coop that has infected chickens. Do you have something, some legal recourse?
That's a good question. We have to really check that out.
As a health?
Yes, I know I do a lot. There's a lot of leeway with the, you know, the biting and the rabies type of stuff. I mean, I can confiscate animals, as far as dogs and stuff like that. Good question. Very good question. Yeah, where does that authority lie?
Is that something you can check on the code?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because I would imagine, I mean, I've heard in the, I've heard that, you know, health commissioners can order, you know, chickens be-
Definitely will need to look at that.
Just thrown.
Yeah, terminated or destroyed, and that's, you know, how do we do that?
But is it already in the code? That's, that would be a good question.
Yeah, those are, those are things, though, I think, you know, should be addressed in the code, just to make it comprehensive, you know, exactly when we do have a situation, how to deal with it. Exactly.
Jerry, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Jeff, you bring up a real good point about the waste. From a person that was-
Make it a question, please.
All right, I was raised on two acres. We had ducks, chickens, rabbits. It was a one-week process, or weekend process to clean. Number eight here, "Waste shall only be stored in a reasonable, airtight, predator-proofed container." I don't really see in any of this where it should be disposable permanently.
Correct, or where-
Well, it stinks after a while.
Oh, I, oh, trust me, I am well aware. And it's, and it doesn't really address where that should be stored at on the property.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's a double concern.
As long as it's in an airtight container.
Exactly, because after, you know, Bridget will tell you, after speaking aside of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of houses, everybody has a different definition of reasonable cleaning. Those are, those are things that I think we should really button up as going forward.
I think there's more work needs to be done on this then.
Okay, Robyn?
I was wondering, have you seen an increase in rodents, vermin on properties?
We did at the end of last, last fall, to be honest with you. We saw a little uptick in rats and other things, but as far as-
Talk about as it relates to-
On property, not really. And I see the coyotes around, nothing, nothing, you know, out of the ordinary, but we will bring more, you know, we'll probably be having a coyote discussion eventually, depending on where this goes and other things.
But that's a predator issue.
Yeah.
The issue with the rodents is not, it's just access to food for them.
Exactly, exactly.
And so I, look at what other communities have done. We're not the only one who is either considering or doing this.
Absolutely.
To get information on what has transpired as an increase in, you know, quality of life concern.
Absolutely.
Rodents and so on and so forth.
I will definitely research and get back to you on that, as far as other communities, talking to other health commissioners and other things, that's an easy one, no doubt.
Garrett, you're in action.
Do we have the same restrictions when it comes to health concerns for entering or getting on properties?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're really instructed, I mean-
So you're not allowed to go onto a property and-
We're allowed to go up to the front door, basically, is where the law, you know, stops us, basically. I mean, we try, as Bridget says, try to be as creative as possible going into other neighbors' houses. Usually, we have a lot more success going to the neighbor's house in the back, so we can see in and be able to take some pictures and kind of get a really good idea of what's going on there. Usually, people, you know, if there is a concern, they're going to, they see it, and they're going to, they're going to show you exactly what's going on, and, without a doubt.
Thank you.
Garrett, or not Garrett, Gwen, you had a question?
Yeah. What are our guidelines for removing dog feces or litter boxes?
That, we don't have a really, we have a, I mean, we chase a lot of people who don't clean up their dog feces. I know we have an ordinance on that, but as far as on personal property?
But for the most part, that's left to-
Kind of, personal responsibility.
Dog owners are responsible for their own animals.
Absolutely, absolutely. And trust me, we have gotten complaints on, from neighbors, and, you know, we write an order.
But ultimately, it's the responsibility.
Personal responsibility of the homeowner.
And then, when neighbors, when neighbors have an issue or a complaint?
Correct.
They reach out and it gets enforced passively?
Correct.
Right, is that the phrase?
Usually, if you talk to people, complaint-driven.
Complaint-driven, okay, exactly.
Complaint-driven, yeah, but I mean, if we see it and it's in the code, that's our obligation to write up an order and talk to the homeowner and, you know, try to get a cleaning frequency.
Yeah, so I guess this would be for Bridget. So could you not insert under number five about regularly cleaning to control dust, odor, rodents, and waste? So that we would have that in the record, so that we could enforce that?
Well, five does include wastes? It does say?
Well, rodents is the word that I'm trying to-
Okay, yeah. And we do have other sections that- And we do have other sections that, of our code, of our housing code, that address rodents in any property. So we would include that too, but yes, we can include that. And just one of the things too, that Hope and I both looked at numerous cities, very few had, actually, this was actually the most comprehensive ones that we came up with, we did not find any specification of how often the waste needed to be emptied or addressed or issues of closeness. It was basically in terms of the coop and the run, the setback requirements, if they had a setback requirement, were the only stipulations in terms of where it was, what was placed on the property. But we could look at it for sure.
Roger?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, and I gotta ask, I'm gonna ask our mayor, since he's the lot of experience with chickens. We're only talking about six chickens here, right?
Maximum.
Maximum. So how much waste can six chickens generate every week?
It isn't so how much waste they do, it's how many times are you gonna clean it up? If you only clean it up once a year, you got a pile of doo-doo or whatever you call it.
With six chickens?
You gotta clean it every week.
You gotta clean it every week. You know, a dog walks around, it isn't in the same place. When you build your chicken coop, it's gonna build up. Your dog walks around the backyard.
Well, I guess my second question is, is that, well, there are people who, oh.
No, go ahead, finish up.
No, you know, I hear that people are utilizing it for fertilizer.
Yes.
So the question is, is that, you know, how do we, oh, you have to-
It would have to be composted and stirred in. That's one of the things that I said, if we add that, because right now, it says it's in a sealed container. It's, when I read this and this was taken, we modeled this after other, other cities, I took that, very similar to you with a litter box with a cat. Once it's filled, you're going to discard of that appropriately with your solid waste service. With the composting, I would specify that it needs to be buried. It needs to be basically turned into dirt or there will be an odor issue. So that is, to just put it in a compost pile with vegetables is very different, so. There would be a little work if that was what they were wanting to do.
Tracy?
Yeah, I would think that the smell and everything that people are concerned about on number eight is taken care of by number five, where it says maintain the rest, be ready to clean to control dust and odor.
Right.
So I think that's taken care of.
Right. One of the things we've learned, or at least I've learned in my time in government, is you can't always codify common sense. Sometimes, there has to be some reasonableness that people as homeowners are going to make. It is no different than cats. We have, and I will be coming forth, with a hoarding ordinance dealing with cats. It has become a significant issue with this on several properties. Most people would know not to put out eight cans of cat food in your backyard and take windows out of your basement to allow them to free range. We do have two instances where that has occurred, a third one on the horizon. So we will be coming forth with that. But the majority of cat owners, even cats that are outside cats, do not create issues for adjacent property owners. So there is a great deal of specificity in this and we would absolutely come back and make adjustments if we found that there was something that was missing or that we think is too onerous to allow this to go forward. But I also caution not to allow, basically, code enforcement to make some reasonableness in what's planned. The code enforcement officers and everyone else in my department know when it's become an egregious problem, when it's not. We get calls and complaints a lot of times about solid waste complaints. We will go and it's really not as severe as what they're saying. It might be a personal issue with residents. Then there's other ones where it is a serious problem and we step in. So between responsible homeownership and caring for, if you're going to take on this responsibility and the enforcement that we can carry it forward with, I think it would be appropriate policy as it's written.
Any else from council? Jack?
Bridgette, with House Bill 175, which is in the General Assembly right now, and I think it's probably been held up in committee, that is a much broader law, isn't it? That would allow different types of animals other than chickens. I think you have rabbits and-
Right, goats.
Goats, yes.
Yes, yes. And one of the things is by doing this, we are a charter community, by having this, this would take that precedent over that. It's when we don't have something on the books that then state law takes precedent. Because as a charter community, that is one of the important reasons we became that.
So can I just continue? If somebody wanted to have goats and we passed this and it was in existence, we could say, no, you can't have goats.
The goats would still fall under 505 where you cannot have it in less than two acres.
Okay.
Which that part is still staying on the books.
Okay.
Any else from council? Anybody from the audience? Okay, what do we want to do with this?
I'd like to make the motion to accept Bridgette's recommendations.
Gwen?
Did you have?
I was just gonna, I'm not so sure the people in the back heard that there's, this is questions from the audience, so if you just want, I just want to make sure if people have a chance.
Did everyone understand that we, if there was anybody from the audience that had questions or wanted to speak on this issue, you could come forward?
Okay.
Okay, we're back to the motion.
I'd like to-
There's one right there.
You have to come to the mic.
Come on up, hurry up, give your name and address. You almost missed out on that one.
So Brian Vocine, 1639 East Main Street. I'm wondering if there, are we talking about chickens or hens? Because that's specified in the thing, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We really don't answer the questions, but yes, hens.
Good question.
Okay, was there a second to the motion?
Second.
She didn't make a motion.
Did you finish your motion?
She didn't make it.
Let me, I'll just, I'll motion again. I'd like to make a motion that we accept Bridgette's recommendations for allowing for the keeping of urban chickens in Kent.
Second.
Discussion?
Just that, I mean-
Do you have something down there?
Just, just that I-
I can't see Gwen.
Oh, sorry. I'm leaning forward. Sorry. Just that, thank you for the work that you put into this. I know that it wasn't an easy topic. I think that there are enough people that I've heard from in this city that would like to keep a couple of hens in their backyard. And I've heard from people that don't necessarily want to keep them, but that believe that people should have the ability to keep them if they live in Kent and they pay property taxes and they're responsible urban chicken owners.
Go ahead, Heidi.
Yeah, I would like to, I seconded the motion. I agree with Gwen. We did, we did talk about some additions and things that we're gonna follow up on, so I would like to, in the final writing of this, I would like to perhaps include-
What, what order? Are you gonna make an amendment to your motion, Heidi?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, then it, as stands.
Okay, as stands, I'm all for it.
I would move to amend the motion to change the property line setback from, I wish we could have discussed this further, but I would have, I would propose that it's a 20-foot setback on the side property line. And then if we're gonna have a 30, and then I would also move to amend that the 30-foot setback be changed to a 50-foot setback from an existing structure. So that would include, we're taking into consideration that the proximity to the neighbor's structure.
Is there a second? Fails for lack of a second. Robin for discussion.
Yeah, I had wanted to attach to a sunset provision maybe two or three years so that we have an opportunity really to see how this works for people. And it's not necessarily a permanent situation that will keep people aware of precisely what they need to do, as far as being a neighbor, as far as being someone who, this opportunity, the betterment of the community as opposed to people who-
So you're amend, so you're making amendment to make it a, put a sunset, a three-year sunset on the proposed motion?
Two or three years, it would be.
Is there a second to that? Fails for lack of a second. Vote on the motion? Are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, vote on the motion, all in favor?
I had a comment, still, we still want counsel comment?
Not one of motions on the floor.
I can speak to the motion.
Still a discussion, okay.
Yeah. You know, I'm not opposed to having the chickens if that's what people want to do, but I have to say that 10 feet is too close on a side setback and I don't think that 30 feet takes into consideration how close or proximity to a neighboring parcel. And that's the issue that is most concerned for people is, is how does it affect me? And I don't think we're protecting the people that don't want them by having this proximity, so.
Now, we're gonna continue with discussion or did we have a motion to vote on the floor?
It's a motion to accept.
Yeah, we're allowed to have discussion.
Yeah, so I would finish my discussion on the motion by saying, I don't want to vote against the motion, but I don't like the 10 feet, so I don't.
Okay, Roger, your hand shot up down there.
Yeah, you know, three years ago, I had someone call me in the community and said, Roger, do you believe that there should be chickens in the city of Kent? And I actually said I could not see any way that in an urban setting, there could be chickens in the city. But I think that a lot of education, a lot, learning a lot of different things and learning about how these, how many communities are allowing chickens, first of all. Secondly, I don't know if anyone noticed the advertisement on, see when you're retired, you watch some TV. There's an advertisement where you actually see a guy racing out of his apartment, chasing his hen down the road. I don't know if you've caught that. The city of Brooklyn, there are chickens up and down, or hens, excuse me, up and down the thing. So I, I'm torn because I kind of agree with Robin in some ways that we should pilot this for a couple of years. I don't believe there are gonna be more than 50 households that are going to jump right on this. I'll be shocked. But I think the opportunity would be there for people who are interested. So I'm gonna support it. I agree with Garrett. I struggle with the side yard a little bit. I would hope that some common sense, you know, sets in when people decide to do this. But I'm gonna support the motion.
Gwen, did you have your hand up again?
No, I didn't actually. I can think of someone that's not.
Mike did.
Was it Mike? I knew there was a hand came up down there.
Bridgette, how many times have you done this? Gone through the chicken?
Point of order.
What? True, I'm just, I was just making a statement. But I want to thank you for this because I know we've done this, this is probably the third time I've sat through a chicken meeting. I think we spent way too much time on it. I think it's gonna be a work in progress from the get-go. So I don't think there's really a need for a sunset. I think it's gonna work itself out. That's all I have to say.
Were we done? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Clap, clap.
Well, that's it, we're done.
No, exact session.
Need to ask these students, what did you learn tonight? Chickens.